Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out here this evening. Good evening to all of you. As you know, we're here tonight to discuss removing milkweed from the city of Columbus list of prohibited noxious weeds. This is a simple step that will help support local pollinators, especially monarch butterflies, who, as many of you probably know, only lay their eggs on milkweed plants. Approximately 75 percent of plant species rely on pollinators like the monarch butterfly to reproduce. And plant-based food derived from pollination forms the foundation of local food chains. In fact, it is estimated that one out of every three bites on our dinner plate tonight will have been made possible by a pollinator. Supporting monarch butterflies and other pollinators in Columbus by planting milkweed and other native plants will help our local ecosystems thrive. My hope is that this hearing will not only provide information on the proposed change to Columbus City Code, but will also inspire Columbus residents to get involved with local initiatives to make a positive impact on the environment and utilizing milkweed and many other forms. There are two hashtags, if you want to tweet or engage in any kind of social media tonight about this. There are two hashtags that can help spread the word on this initiative. We can start them here tonight and continue to use them. They are, and I didn't think of these, and they're super clever. Was it the Conservatory that thought of them? Yeah. So hashtag Got Milkweed? And hashtag Save the Monarchs. So please, please use those going forward. So we have a formal agenda of speakers, as you see up here on either side of me. After they conclude their formal remarks and expert testimony, we will have time for public comment from the audience as well. You have filled, those of you who wish to speak have filled out speaker slips, so thank you for doing that. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker, as per council rules. And that's really all the ground rules we have to go over. So now I will kick off the formal agenda by inviting Heather Truesdale to the microphone, or to lean into her microphone. Heather is an Assistant Administrator for Columbus's Code Enforcement Division. She will be discussing what this code change will entail and how it would be enforced.
So currently Title VII of the Health, Sanitation, and Safety Code section is the area where weeds and noxious weeds and rank growth is addressed. And the code is developed, or was developed to minimum standards and govern the responsibility of maintaining those noxious weeds and rank growth to any property or premises within the city limits. The standard specifically relative to noxious weeds is currently enforced by the City of Columbus Code Enforcement Division. And complaints typically are generated through the 301 call center. They are assigned to the code enforcement staff, and code officers are assigned complaints. And inspections are conducted on properties to determine if a violation exists. If a violation exists of this standard, a violation is issued in five days is typically given to comply with those standards. And premises can include streets, alleys, easements, sidewalks, or right-of-ways. The typical use of this code is cited for the many vacant property owners in the city of Columbus that fail to maintain their yards. I can't recall in my 20 years of a single instance where we have written a code violation for specifically milkweed and milkweed alone. There are times when some, there's often complaints about poison ivy. But I think the two most common complaints are regarding the vacant properties, maintaining the vacant properties, the high grass and weeds that occur in those situations, and then, you know, poison ivy. Removing the code will, or removing milkweed from the code will mean that it doesn't meet the definition of a noxious weed, therefore not a violation of Title 70903.
And is there any height restriction on the milkweed that people, is there an education portion of this that people would still be calling milkweed in because they'd be confused over the height? Any kind of sort of active education we would need to engage in?
The standard is regarding height, specifically states for the purpose of the code, the height of 12 inches constitutes a potential hazard, and that may be a situation I could see where it would be a vacant property that high grass and weeds were observed, and there may be milkweed within that area perhaps? That might be something that we would run into.
Okay. And how would that be handled?
Typically, it would, I mean, depending upon if we could identify a specific large area, if it was high grass and weeds, we would send a violation notice to the owner of the property and have them cut that grass in that yard area.
And be specific about that as the preparation.
Right.
Okay. All right. Are we taking questions from the audience in this portion, Kels? Okay. Next, I would like to invite Paul Friedman to speak. Paul is with Building and Zoning Services, and will discuss why milkweed was originally on Columbus's list of prohibited noxious weeds and why it is no longer necessary to prohibit it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The history behind the noxious weed chapter is rather interesting and somewhat convoluted, so bear with me. The city of Columbus adopted our weed chapter, noxious weed chapter, based upon the state's listing historically of noxious weeds. The state in part based their list, not necessarily on the needs of urban dwellers, but rather on commercial agriculture in the rural areas. Many of the weeds listed pose more of a hazard to hay production than they would to individuals who happen to try to eat something such as milkweed. And while milkweed is no doubt poisonous in large quantities, other issues would prevail prior to reaching the toxic level. Toxicity rarely occurs in humans, and if it does occur, when they do see it, it's in large ruminant animals, cattle, who get penned up in the area with no other available food. It's a fruit of last resort, excuse me, for most of the ruminants, and that's where you run into issues, as they're the only ones that would be able to consume mass quantities. Because this affected hay production in rural areas, it was included in a list of noxious weeds historically for the entire state of Ohio. City of Columbus adopted that wholesale, and obviously the needs of urban residents differ dramatically from those in large hay-producing areas. So as such, when we reviewed the code further, even though it always had an exemption for agricultural and horticultural purposes, this would make it crystal clear that milkweed is a permitted plant, is allowed to be cultured, allowed to be grown in the city of Columbus, and therefore the state has removed it from their list, and we are free to remove it from our list and are doing so with this ordinance tonight. The ordinance is a very quick and simple read. It's removing the word "milkweed" in three places which it appears, the definition of what a noxious weed is, and is removing it from the subchapters, subsections of Chapter 709 where it's listed as a noxious weed. This relatively simple ordinance, I hope, has a profound impact on all the pollinators, especially on the monarch butterfly.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Next, Mark Miller from the Franklin Park Conservatory. Thank you for hosting us, and thank you for taking the time to share some words and testimony.
My pleasure. Thank you for reaching out to us to hold this very important hearing here at the Conservatory. I think that most folks in Columbus probably know us for our Blooms and Butterflies exhibit, which is currently going on here. We're in our 24th year. But those butterflies are being highlighted from other parts of the world. And I want everybody to know that we are just as passionate about native butterflies as we are about exotic butterflies. And so, for example, on our community garden campus, we've got the Ingram White Castle Foundation Pollinators Garden. It's an amazing garden, and everything in it is either a host plant or a nectar plant for different types of pollinators, be they bees, or hummingbirds, or butterflies, or even bats. We feel very strongly about the plight of, the current plight of monarch butterflies. They are in significant decline. A lot of that has to do with habitat destruction, or the fact that they simply can't find the milkweed plants they need for both host and nectar. So I thought I'd bring in a couple of milkweeds so that you'd see exactly what we're talking about. This happens to be the common swamp milkweed, but we have 13 native milkweeds, Skleppius, here in Ohio. They're all very beautiful. One of the things I wanted to mention also is the fact that the butterfly weed, Skleppius tuberosa, is our perennial plant of the year this year. The Perennial Plant Association, if you didn't know, is actually headquartered in Hilliard, Ohio. So they're beautiful plants. I happen to have six different species in my own backyard. I think they're wonderful additions to almost any garden, and they're incredibly important. As Councilmember Brown mentioned, they are the sole source for host and nectar for monarchs. So we applaud your efforts in taking them off of the noxious weed list, and we want to also encourage everyone to think about planting milkweeds, Skleppius, in their own gardens. Very important. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Michael Goldman with the Grange Insurance Audubon Center. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me, Councilmember Brown. Thank you for, excuse me, for inviting the Grange Insurance Audubon Center here tonight to participate in this important initiative. My name is Michael Goldman. I'm the Conservation Manager at the Grange Insurance Audubon Center. Has anyone ever been out here, out there? Well, that's great. For those of you who have not been there, Grange Insurance Audubon Center's mission is to awaken and connect participants to the beauty of the natural world in the heart of Columbus and inspire environmental stewardship in their daily lives. We're one of the leaders in central Ohio for environmental and outdoor education, with over 5,000 students participating in our formal classes and over 40,000 visitors annually. We have community outreach conservation programs, such as Audubon at Home, which strives to create a bird-friendly community in Columbus by planting native plants and removing invasive species in people's backyards. We also hold a Conservation Connection series, which has presentations from local experts about how to keep Columbus beautiful and environmentally friendly. And I hope you'll all ride your bike over to visit us real soon. Milkweed is an extremely important plant for a multitude of species, not just birds and butterflies, but monarchs in particular. The monarch is not only one of America's most iconic butterfly species, but it is also one of the most beautiful of all butterflies, in my opinion. This species of butterfly goes through a complete metamorphosis, meaning there are four distinct parts to its life cycle: an egg, caterpillar, pupa, and adult. And it is in this crucial egg and caterpillar phase of life which the monarch needs milkweed. A caterpillar needs a host plant to live on. A host plant is a plant which provides the resources necessary for a caterpillar to grow, and monarch caterpillars can only survive on a certain type of plant that we call milkweed. And only milkweed has all the nutrients necessary to produce a healthy, viable population of monarch caterpillars, which will one day metamorphose into an adult butterfly. Monarchs have adapted to eat milkweed for a variety of reasons. However, one is more important than the others, which is that milkweed does contain that very, very mild poison, which only when ingested makes the plant very unpalatable to eat. As the caterpillars eat the milkweed, they are able to store some of this mild poison in their bodies. So when a predator tries to eat it, the caterpillar or butterfly is also unpalatable. And this convinces predators to not eat any kind of monarch due to their untastefulness. Although we generally pair milkweeds with monarchs, there is a plethora of other species who use milkweed. One of my favorite birds, the oriole, prefers using milkweed fibers for its hanging nests. And of course, hummingbirds are attracted to the sweet nectar from the flower. Many insects are considered milkweed specialists due to their dependence on milkweed. And many of these insects also sport the beautiful orange and black found on monarchs as a way to tell potential predators, "Hey, don't you eat me. I don't taste good." Some birds may stay away from these insects, but there are also a number of birds who flock to milkweed to eat those tasty morsels. Birds not only eat some of the insects that are eating milkweed, but they will also ingest some of the seeds. So without this important plant, an untold number of insects and birds would not be able to survive. And to conclude, I'd just like to invite everyone here to explore the Grange Insurance Audubon Center tucked away in the Scioto Audubon Metro Park, and I hope to see you all there soon.
Thank you so much. Our final scheduled speaker this evening is Tina Moan, who is the National Resource and Property Manager with Columbus Recreation and Parks. Tina?
Thanks for having me. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, in 2006, Mayor Ginther signed what we know is, as is the mayor's monarch challenge, basically. And it's challenging different cities throughout the United States to sign on to the pledge to say that we will, as a city, embrace the fact that we are losing pollinator species, both plants and animal, and with that, we will, as a city, follow through with initiatives to, sorry, I'm moving Alison. Follow through with initiatives to embrace what we already have existing, to enhance it, to be able to establish landscaping plans and things within the city that we're doing as a whole, what we've already been doing, but then also add some more pollinator species to attract more pollinator, more pollinator plants to attract more pollinator species. So in 2006, like I said, we did sign on to that. We signed on as an initial, we will step forward with three specific things that we'll move forward with, and that was community initiatives and convening, which we're doing now. We've been doing, I've been doing it with a lot of you already, in reaching out and forming partnerships to identify areas within parkland and within other city properties that we can move forward with establishing plants and animals in specific sections, some of which are riparian corridors, some that we've been mowing for years, to establish more of an aesthetic area, but also to, again, fulfill our pledge. To also follow through with a reduction of mowing, and to be able to do that, that helps obviously economically with our staff and maintenance staff with our parks, and, but to also be able to show that with a mowing reduction, there's also reduction in herbicides and pesticides, which again is implementing our initiative to step forward, because we understand that some of those things are impacting not only pollinator species, but also species that thrive and host on the pollinator species. Also doing programming and demo gardens, which we, and I'll talk about in a few minutes, with some of our pathways, which we'll get to. And also to show that while planting, more plantings for nectar planting, native species, that we're also demonstrating that when we're purchasing those sorts of things from our friends within different nurseries, that we want to promote native species throughout our park systems as well. So it's really covering a lot of different aspects. So one of the things that we wanted to do as a city to also meet some of our other initiatives is to create sort of what we've already been doing and add to it, kind of like if you've ever been on the Olentangie Greenway Trail, or the Scioto Trail, or the Allen Creek Trail, the bike way, and/or the Blue Ways, to add to that the pollinator pathways. So we started working with several groups in the Worthington area, if you're familiar with it, which is at the very top of the map. That's sort of, at this point, the start of where the Olentangie Greenway Trail is. And we implemented and working with the city of Worthington and the Worthington Women's Garden Club, and have established one of the largest gardens there. And then we've kind of moved our way south, hitting areas that are more urban, that we can have more visibility, more of an educational component to show. With the install of all of our gardens, we're installing signage as well to help, which is another one of the 25 initiatives for the mayor's challenges. There are 25 in total, and like I said, our goal is certainly to do at least three to eight, but at some point, maybe to be able to get all 25 of them. And with that, we've built partnerships. We've been able to establish almost 1,000 acres of land that's been conserved and reserved just for preservation of monarch species and other butterfly species and native plantings. And we've learned that even though they're small plots in some circumstances, they're actually having a large impact overall from the park systems and trying to implement throughout all these different areas, kind of an area that not only we are moving forward with pathways, but that the pollinator species can do that as well. Good?
Yeah. Sounds good. Sorry you got the [inaudible] over there. All right. Thank you. So that includes the formal speaker agenda for the evening, but, and I'd like to thank all of our city team who's here, and Michael and Mark and your organizations for being here to support this. And then we'd like to start the portion of the agenda where we hear from all of you who've come up to, who've come to sign up and speak. So we will start with a reminder, you have three minutes, and just please state your name at the beginning of your talk. Joel Hunt is here with the Ohio Pollinator Habitat Initiative of ODOT, and the microphone's right there. Yep.
And I brought with me a letter of support and I applaud you. Inmates with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections spent the winter processing those pods, and we're putting them into milkweed seed packets that are available to the public. So if this works out, then we have seeds available for you to plant around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Harry Ruiz. And welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I need to get this to munchkin size here. My name is Harry Ruiz, Councilmember Brown, and special guest. I live in Columbus and have been gardening organically for more than 25 years. For the past few years, I have intentionally invited caterpillars, butterflies, other pollinators, and wildlife into my gardens by planting native trees, shrubs, and perennials. My two young next-door neighbors visit my gardens daily with identification books in hand to search for caterpillars, chrysalises, butterflies to identify. Their faces shine when they tell me what they've found. They understand the monarch population has been decimated by loss of habitat, pesticides, and weather events during migration, and they are concerned. So I want to thank you for holding this public hearing, reviewing the city ordinance to now allow residents to grow milkweeds, a plant monarchs depend on to fulfill their life cycle. On a related note, Monarch Watch, a nonprofit education outreach program based at the University of Kansas, is looking for citizen scientists to help them fill in the gaps of their data for spring and fall. If anybody wants to know more about this effort or wants to get involved, just go to monarchwatch.org and click on the blog link. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, Ms. Ruiz, especially. I should have included this upfront when I opened the agenda, but this all started because Ms. Ruiz contacted us and asked for this change. And we looked into it, and we're finally here together, holding the hearing. And I'm, first of all, pleased you could be here, but second of all, so grateful that you took it upon yourself to contact us and say, "Hey, I see something that's wrong. Let's address it." So thank you. Thank you. This is truly made possible by a constituent. Next, I'd like to invite up Sarah Dalton.
Yes, I'm Sarah Dalton, and I'm a retired Metro Parks naturalist. Worked at Blendon Woods for about 20 years. Grew monarchs for most of those years, raised them and shared them with the kids. And as far as an educational effort, I can tell you, they're fantastic with the kids. It gives the kids something to get in the classroom, something living and alive that they can bond with. I have to tell you that during the course of finding stock to get breeding to make all those caterpillars for classrooms, I have cruised the back alleys of Columbus, short north, the fairgrounds area, and I have to tell you, you are already raising lots of monarchs. There is honey vine, it's a vining form of milkweed, climbing up the fences in the short north area and the campus area. The escapes that they get from the ODA and R thing, they find plenty of milkweed, because I have found plenty of caterpillars out there. You have milkweed already in Columbus. All you need to do is just leave it alone and encourage it where you can, and let it go on. I've even found it downtown behind the art museum, going up the fences. Common milkweed is a good one to have around too, and I'm sure everybody knows this, so I won't bore you about that. But just let you know that, you know, as far as getting kids connected with the environment and so forth, they can't have mammals in school, they can't have birds in school, they can't have insects, and monarchs are one of the best ones. I raise them, I give them to teachers in the fall, still doing that, even though I'm retired from Metro Parks now. And I did want to thank the council and people for thinking about what you're doing with your legal and your ordinances, and making it possible for people like me to grow it without getting hassled. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to invite up Laura Fay.
Thank you very much. My name is Laura Fay. I'm with the Friends of the Lower Olentangie Watershed. We totally support this change. We're glad it's happening, not just for milkweed, or not just for the milkweed and the monarchs, but just for a balanced environment. But while you're doing this, we have a question, and that is, you've also included pokeberry on this list of noxious weeds. According to the USDA database, pokeberry does not exist under the common name. And pokeweed is not, if that's what you mean, pokeweed, that is not on the list of state noxious weeds either, so. And I have some information here from USDA, and there is some nutritional value to animals also from pokeweed. So just because we might never get this ordinance open again, I just would like you to consider it.
Not familiar with, sorry, did you conclude?
It's also known as inkberry, and it's one of the alternate names. Pokeberry, pokebush, pokeweed, inkberry is there. Many people may have heard the song "Poke salad Annie." At a certain stage of its life, it is edible, but later on, it is not, and that's one of the issues. The list isn't just exclusive Ohio noxious weeds. The city of Columbus does have other weeds on there that unfortunately pose a double-edged sword for us. Poison ivy is an incredible weed plant for birds. The berries are very nutritious. On the other hand, it can create issues. So we do try to balance what's on the list with what we, as urban dwellers, have to face. Now, we can discuss further if we want to look at removing pokeberry by whatever common name. There are various common names, including up to an inkberry, on this. But there was some concern over when it was added to the list, not because it was on the state list, but because of local concerns, because where inkberry grows, some of the habits of inkberry being very invasive, there was some concern there, as well as it being poisonous later on in life of the plant. But we obviously do know from the song that you can eat it when it's young.
Any lines you can eat too. Okay, I just would like you to consider it. Another issue about your ordinance is the height restriction. And code enforcement officers can't know all their plants. I would not know that's a milkweed if it's not in bloom myself, and so, you know, if someone came to my yard and said, "You have things over 12 inches," there should be some education or some way that people can show a drawing of their yard to show where their horticultural area is and a process, so that people like myself know, "Oh, I should have a drawing of my yard in case someone complains," and so I don't have to cut it. Because I think someone said five days for compliance. That's...
Absolutely, I agree. And every year, we do training for the code officers. And every year, we do training for the code officers and go through PowerPoint, in addition to have this document that's available to all the code officers and try to, you know, at least point out what those, what those noxious weeds consist of, so that they're educated and they can identify them.
So, Heather, if someone come, if a neighbor calls in because I have this in my yard and they think that it's a noxious weed, code enforcement comes out, they don't happen to recognize it as milkweed, and they send me a violation notice. I'm allowed to call them and say, "No, it's milkweed," and they can come out and understand that, and then take the violation back?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I hope that doesn't occur. I hope that we can make sure that the code officers are educated on what a noxious weed is and when to, I mean, continually, we do in staff training and have that dialogue before a violation notice is issued.
Okay, great. So, the hope would be that if there are learning curve issues, that our enforcement officers are very used to having those conversations with property owners and letting those property owners speak to what's on their property. Okay, great.
I did not intend to imply they're not doing a good job.
Yeah. I understand that. Didn't come off that way. But I do think the point of clarification is important, because, I mean, it is true that plants look different all the time, but we embrace dialogue between our enforcement officers and property owners. So, thank you for pointing it out. Next, we have Cindy Decker.
I'm not sure if you've acknowledged some of the other people who've spoken today. First of all, I want to say that I'm really thrilled that the city is making this move. It's a small, small change, but it says a lot about where we want to go with our community, and Tina, what you're doing, and what ODOT's doing, those kind of things. And Mark, you're right, every single one of the milkweeds is beautiful, they should be in every garden. So, I think that even just the city saying that this is important, it reinforces that we care about our pollinators and we want to have a healthy environment. That said, I would love this change to be a jumping-off point to address other parts of this code that haven't worked as well in recent years as they may once have. I live in a, one of Clintonville's ravines, and it doesn't fall under the neat categorization of straight streets with sidewalks. It would be great if Columbus, like some other cities in the country, including Cincinnati, developed a part of code that addressed managed natural areas, because what fits, perhaps, on Schreier Place in Clintonville does not fit on Iuka Ravine as well. So, it would be great to have a code that also addresses our specific needs, not just our ravines, but any place that's more of a managed natural area.
How do you feel that your, that your area is held back by the current code, not reflecting it?
Anybody in code enforcement knows what Hall Ravine has had, issues the past few years. We are a very curvy road, and the creek in some places is within 12 inches of the roadway. The city no longer knows exactly where the right of way is, because whenever, we don't have curbs in a lot of places, so when they come and pave, they pave what's available. The street varies in width, two to four feet in some places. So, we had a neighbor complain, again, twisty road, about visibility issues. And we, as neighbors, we have an association that tries to keep things from getting overgrown, keep things trimmed back, because what we don't want is to have the city come down and brush hog. A lot of people put a lot of time into planting along the roads. So, we went back, we went out, and we cut and limbed up and brought things back. But, you know, we had multiple meetings with code enforcement, because technically, we're probably still not in compliance, because, like, in places that are within 12 feet, we have shrubbery and bushes that are holding the creek, it's holding the road bed, and you need that. You take those out, and then the road is going to fall into the creek. So, like, for Earth Day this year, I've requested 300 trees and shrubs. And one of the big things we're going to be doing is on streambank stabilization, because we've got, you know, you have to worry about erosion. And some of those are going to be probably closer than the road than code is going to say is right. Now, we'll keep them trimmed down, but they're still going to be taller than 12 inches, because to do their job, they're going to have to hold the ground. So, those are, that's, there are, other cities have put together policies that describe what a managed, what a managed system looks like, and then the rules for doing it, and something that works for that particular, I can only speak to my neighborhood, because I know what's going on there. But there, I know there have been issues in some of the other ravines in Clintonville, and I believe in other areas, maybe around the reservoirs, or other areas where you have buffers. So, it would be nice to address those as to rules that fit those circumstances.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. And last, we have Ann Woods.
Aha, it's at the right level. My name is Ann Woods. I'm with Worthington Hills Garden Club. When you saw the map of the bike path, we are the beginning pollinator garden at the far north end, and our members, I'm telling you, lovingly planted those plants and hauled water there in their cars to get that going, and we now actually even have a bluebird there, if any of you want to enjoy that this spring. And now, thank you all. Councilwoman Brown, on behalf of the 100-member Worthington Hills Garden Club, I commend your efforts to make the City of Columbus a more pollinator-friendly community. We wholeheartedly support the proposed ordinance to remove milkweed from the city's noxious weeds. We are aware of the precipitous decline in the monarch butterfly numbers, a decline of over 90% in the past two decades. Milkweed is the only plant in which monarchs lay their eggs and the only plant their caterpillars eat, far from being noxious. The milkweed is critical for monarch survival. We applaud and encourage the City of Columbus to plant milkweed along with more nectar and poller-producing plants to support our butterfly as well as bee populations. You know we work hard, so if there's anything we can do to support your efforts, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, as we wrap up tonight, I want to thank all of you for being here. I want to thank those who gave expert testimony. I want to thank Ms. Ruiz for bringing this to our attention. And I'd like to emphasize that this is one step towards supporting monarch butterflies and other pollinators. And we recognize the importance in our urban community, in our unique community that is Columbus, to do this. And we want to engage in the kind of open dialogue to help understand what other improvements we can make. I know this for a fact, having heard all the testimony, that all of you in this room are the experts, not myself, and the people at this table are the experts, not myself. But we want to partner with you to make these kinds of common sense improvements. So, I do want to thank you again, Ms. Ruiz, and I want to thank Mr. Hunt for bringing support from ODOT, and Ms. Dalton for what you do in our classrooms with our students. I want to thank Ms. Fay for taking a fine-toothed look at code and giving more suggestions. We embrace that. I want to thank Ms. Decker also for your input, and we'd love to talk more about how that would look. And I want to thank Ms. Woods and the Worthington Hills Garden Club for sharing your letter. So, with that goal in mind, we have the opportunity for everyone here to sign up to receive a free milkweed plant as part of the community garden event taking place here at the Franklin Park Conservatory on April 21st. You can sign up with Annie, if Annie can raise her hand right there, and she will provide you with additional information. Also, for your reference, this piece of legislation will be on first reading on April 17th, which is just about, it's a, I don't, I'm not going to, what, two weeks? Yeah, it's about two weeks away. That will be the first reading, and then it will come for second reading seven days later, as long as there aren't any major problems, and that second reading is when it'll have its final vote for passage. So, that concludes tonight's hearing. Thank you again for all of you, and thank you to the Franklin Park Conservatory and the Scioto Audubon, and especially for hosting. So, have a good one.